Yeah, good evening. We're having a little bit of technical difficulties with our video stream. We'll start our meeting in just a few minutes while Director Smith gets us up and running.
A little bit of feedback audio too.
Should we just start without video, Will?
No.
Yeah, okay, sounds great. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Coopville School District Board of Directors' regular meeting for Thursday, August 28, 2025. Please rise and join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As a reminder, this meeting will be recorded and available on the district's YouTube channel and website. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Move to adopt the agenda as presented?
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda as presented. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we'd like to read our district land acknowledgement statement and our district equity statement. And I would like to invite Director Ferreira to read our land acknowledgement statement.
Coopville schools are located on the ancestral lands of the Lower Skagit people. For thousands of years, coast sailors tribes have stewarded these lands, waterways, plants, and animals. We pay respects to the elders past, present, and emerging, for they hold the memories, traditions, and culture of their people across the nation. Coopville schools are committed to educating students, staff, and the community about this long history, as we honor and acknowledge the continued presence of the Swinimish Indian tribal community and all other indigenous peoples.
Thank you, and I'm very excited to welcome our new student board rep, Lyndee Sylvester, to the podium to read our Coopville School District Equity Statement.
The Coopville School District is unequivocally committed to providing a safe, equitable, and inclusive working and learning community for all. Whether about race, religion, language, immigration status, culture, sexual orientation, gender identity, class, ability, or a combination of these, all students deserve to be respected for who they are and acknowledged for the strengths they bring to our learning community.
Thank you so much. Lyndee and George will be joining us at our September meeting, and we'll talk more about that during our board reports, but thanks for being here. Onto consent agenda. Is there any item a board member wishes to remove from the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove item G approved in the conference.
Okay. Item G will become item H under new business. Is there any other items? There are none, I'll call for a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented with the amendment.
Second the motion? It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as amended. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Moving us on to public comment. If you didn't have a chance to sign up for public comment, the sheet is on the podium. Just as a reminder, that the total public comment time is 21 minutes. Each speaker has a maximum of three minutes. Public comment period is an opportunity for the board to listen to individuals on educational issues. However, the public comment period is not a time for dialogue between the board and the public. The board will not respond to statements, questions, or challenges made during public comment period, and there will be no back and forth dialogue. Please know that the board's silence is neutral. It is neither a signal of agreement or disagreement with the speaker's remarks. Although the board will not engage in dialogue, the board chair may ask the speaker a clarifying question, or it's possible a school staff may contact the speaker to follow up on an issue later. And finally, please remember that your words have an impact and that you are legally responsible for your words. We ask that you help us model for our students what a respectful and inclusive community looks and sounds like. We do have one speaker signed up tonight for public comment, and that's Ms. Shelley LaRue.
Hey there, I'm Shelley LaRue, Coopville Educational Support Association President, and I just left CES's very exciting back-to-school night. It's going very well. Just to pop down and say, I wanted to thank Superintendent Leatherwood and the district bargaining team for a sincere collaboration, tentative agreement with our unit, and I hope to have a ratification next week. Just want to say thank you very much for a respectful bargain.
Thank you. Moving on to reports and communication, we'll start out with our emergency preparedness plan. I'll turn it over to Superintendent Leatherwood to introduce our speakers.
All right, we have our new principal at the middle school and high school, Ms. Rebecca Case, and Dan Gerard, who will be coming up and presenting tonight. And if Principal McCall makes it from her open house, she'll be also joining. So thank you.
Thank you Superintendent Leatherwood, and good evening, directors. We're excited to share a little bit about the Safe Schools Plan for the Coopville School District. All right, so we start off with our vision, our mission, and our pillars. And safety is inherent in all that we do, and it's an incredibly important function of what we do. So the pillars ensure excellence in power students promote student and staff well-being, manage resources effectively, connect with family and community. Safe school plan. So we're going to look at the procedures that we have for our safety drills, and these are consistent with the I Love You Guys Foundation, which is a foundation that was formed after a school shooting. It was formed by parents of a school shooting victim, and this is how they were addressing and dealing with what happened. And it has become a worldwide leader in not only school safety, but safety for organizations in general. And the terms that you're going to see tonight are actually used in tens of thousands of organizations worldwide. And the I Love You Guys Foundation has become the cornerstone for school safety in the United States as well as many other countries. So the terms "hold secure," "lockdown," "evacuate," and "shelter," those are the terms that we use for virtually anything that happens in our schools, or we have to implement our safety plan. This is what we drill for, this is what we train for. Virtually any situation, and we're going to use a variety of those. And sometimes we'll use them together. We could have a situation where we need to hold students in their classroom, and there's a medical emergency happening in part of the school. Maybe we need to secure and bring people inside and make sure that the outside doors are locked. Maybe we then have to evacuate the school and leave the premises. So these are the terms that we're going to use. We're going to train. They're consistent. Most other schools in our region use these same terms, and the ESD supports training around the I Love You Guys Foundation and these terms. Okay, so school safety plan. A big part of that plan, what this is representing is the standard reunification method. So the two main pieces that schools work with when we look at the I Love You Guys Foundation is standard response protocol of what can we do in the event of an emergency, and the standard reunification method, which is if we had to evacuate, how do we safely reconnect students with their parents or an appropriate garden, and then we know in our soup information system is allowable to take care of that soup. School safety plan. So working in conjunction with local law enforcement, and this is where that consistent terminology with schools in the region makes it helps quite a bit. We will be having some regular meetings that will, monthly meetings actually, that will include the local law enforcement in support of the school safety plans. We have monthly drills that will be consistent with the standard response protocol, those terms that you saw on one of those earlier slides. We'll communicate with staff, students, and our parents also. There's some really handy information that we'll be planning on sharing with our parents on what those terms mean. And more specifically, in classrooms, you'll see like what staff should do in those events, and that's what we'll train for. But also, there's information we'll be sharing with parents on what parents can expect or what parents need to do in the event of those situations. So we'll be working with our principal group and making sure that not only we're doing our monthly drills, but we're doing them consistent with the standard response protocol, and we'll be establishing classroom evacuation routes from all of our teaching spaces. Okay, incident response team. So the high school, middle school, elementary school are represented. Scott will be working on district responsibilities, and of course, our superintendent will have oversight over all of us. But that is the core of our incident response team. We talked a little bit about the I Love You Guys Foundation and the standard response protocol. So the standard response protocol, there's a lot of great documentation. In fact, they just updated this about six, seven months ago. There's a lot of really good information about what to do in the event of an emergency or a disaster. And this is the, basically, the cornerstone for what we'll be working with our staff and the community regarding safety for our staff and students. So these are the posters that you'll see, standard response protocol. These are the terms that we use. You'll be seeing these posters used in classrooms. They'll be up around schools. And we'll also be sharing information with our parents about what these mean. We'll also ensure that our staff have ID badges, so that we we know who our staff members are, and it's easy to tell who our staff members are. And in addition, it's on the slide, but because of your support, we've been able to make some really key improvements to the ingress and egress for the high school and middle school buildings and the elementary school for that matter. So you're going to hear more about people needing to have IDs to get in our buildings and visitors being screened with background checks. That's a system that because of your support, we're able to install over the summer, and we're still working on the kinks. But in the coming weeks and months, we're going to get that dialed in, and we're really excited about the improvements to safety that that's going to provide. So thank you. Okay, safe school plan. So there's a lot of support materials and training videos on lockdowns. There's a lot of workshops. The I Love You Guys Foundation has some really good information to that materials that are available online. They also have some great trainers that are very easy to work with. Next slide. So this is the different terms that we use, and there is a parent one specific that we will plan on making available to our parents again, so that something they can put up on their fridge. And if there's an event, they can look at that and use it as a resource. Okay, what do I do? Or what shouldn't I do as a parent in this situation? For example, if we have a lockdown, which in my previous district, we did last year, a lot of parents wanted to go get their kids. We're not going to let them in the door if we have lockdown. Our schools are blocked, right? So they need to know, and if they haven't access to information like this, they'll know if we're in a hold or a secure or a lockdown, they're not going to get in the doors. We're not going to let them in. It's closed off. So having information like this successful is good, so that people know what to expect. But also, in the moment, they have the document that they can refer to, because when you're in that moment, the training and the information you received a couple of months ago isn't always accessible. So having things like this is helpful, and that's why we'll also see it posted in classrooms and around other schools. Okay, so next steps. Review protocols and make sure our returning staff and new staff are familiar with our safety plans and the terminology with the I Love You Guys Foundation. We will be implementing our drill schedules. So each month, we will conduct a drill, which will have either one of those actions or multiple actions, depending on what the drill looks like. We'll monitor and adjust the protocols and drills and training for our staff as needed, so that we continue to update and improve the entire system. And that's really why we do the drills, so that we learn and improve. And there's no way to know exactly what's going to happen, but the more that we do drills, the more that we train, the better off we'll be when something happens, because it's not always going to look the same. It's not always going to look like what you drill. But this is an incredibly important function of the school district, and this is something to take very seriously. And that concludes our presentation, so I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
The ID requirement for visitors, what's an acceptable ID and how do you check it?
So let me talk a little bit more through that. So we have a doorbell at our middle school, or sorry, our elementary school and our high school. People need to press that button, and then someone inside, they'll show their ID, some sort of picture ID. Then we let them inside. And if they're just coming to the office to check out a student or ask someone in the office a question, that's all that happens. If they're wanting to access our building or go into our school building from the office, then they need to use their ID, and we have a device that scans it, does a background check. And if it comes up with any hits, it alerts us, and then we make a determination based on what that is, whether it is okay for this person to be in our building.
You say scans it. I mean, it can take any kind of photo ID and...
Well, we haven't worked out all the kinks, so I haven't tried for picture ID and licenses yet. I know that we will have some cases where we might have parents that don't have picture ID with them. So we're going to need to find some workarounds that are safe for everybody. We're not, we are conscientious that we don't want to put something in place that's going to decrease people's comfort level in coming to their school and helping with their school and access to their children. So I think I know where you're going with this. This is not intended to be a barrier for people coming in school. This is intended for us to keep people that we don't know, that are unsafe, that have criminal backgrounds from entering our school.
About after school, is it? I'm just thinking there's a fair amount of student traffic in and out of the building after school. Is it going to be locked after school, when actually students are pretty...
The doors are going to be locked at all times. We'll have staff out there that when the buses drop off in the morning, we'll have the doors open, there are people coming in, or students. But after school, the doors will be locked, and during working hours, it'll be someone at the front desk that can check them in. And I think you're asking some good questions. So in the evening, like if we're having an event where we don't have students in the building, where I don't see us using this type of a system to background check everybody coming to a school concert, that's not the purpose. The purpose is during the school day, we have the classroom, we have the school full of kids, making sure that we know that the people that are coming in to do some sort of business in our school are safe to do that.
Is it a practice to share drills with students? Or do you prefer to like for them to be surprised by that, or with staff, or I just was curious what the normal, what the normal way is?
So I can't speak to the history of the drills in Coopville. Personally, I think especially at the younger grades, but even at the secondary level, it's important for students to know what to do in the event of drills. It is important for students to be taught what to do in the event of drills. So I don't think going into a drill cold and surprising people is the best way for people to learn how to act in an actual event. So my preference is that we pre-teach that, that we are upfront about sharing when we're going to have drills and what type of drill it's going to be. We also have people, students and staff, that are anxious, I believe so, about these kinds of events. And so letting them go ahead on it is key.
That makes sense, thanks.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much. Yeah. Oh wait, did you have a...
I was just going to say, I like what kind of here, I hate the fact you have to go, but I don't want to turn to her.
I guess maybe I would just add, so the elementary, you know, they utilize like a badge system for volunteers, where you've had your background checks and all of those things, like what's the practice at secondary for making sure that volunteers have that, have been cleared with the district office?
It's the same. So when they produce ID and the machine scans that ID, checks their background, prints out the badge. So they'll have a visitor badge with their name on it, and it's one that people, when they see it, they know that person's been through the background check system.
Okay.
So that same structure is going to be at the elementary school now? So it's the same structure at the elementary school now?
Yeah, and this is ongoing. It's something new, and it's the technology. So we're in the process of training people on how to use it. So I think in the coming weeks, we'll have it more dialed in, but it's going to take a little bit for us to get used to it and for our community to get used to it.
I think possibly your question's around the difference between a visitor and a volunteer. So visitor badges will be printed right then, but there are cases where we have regular volunteers. They will not be scanned every time and printed every time. They will have badges, and they're screened through our district office. So it sounds like maybe before I start club meetings in a couple of weeks, and before I start inviting guest speakers, that we can have more of a conversation when it's settled out.
Absolutely.
Cool. I guess I would just add, I would ask another question. So you mentioned having staff in the morning. Like what about passing periods with students going to the gym and the doors and all of that? Are you going to have a staff by the door for that?
Yeah, we're working through those logistics right now. For some of our doors that have the Bob system to get in, we are checking to see if we can time those doors to be opened during passing times. We're still going to need staff to have eyes on any ingress or egress to our building to make sure that they are our students, right? But we're checking to see if we can unlock those manually, or if we just have to go in that area. We are going to try and consolidate which doors students are coming in and out of during pass. But we recognize that we have shop, we have gym, we have places that students need to be outside of our building. So we're trying to support also the safety.
Sounds great.
Two things that came up several years ago. When I first came on the board, the superintendent asked me to serve on the emergency committee. And if you define that that would be a value, I would be very interested in doing something, especially interested in. The other thing that I've had several parents talk to me about, and I think Martin was the one that first told me about it. Can't remember what the name of the group was, but the fact that there are probably a pretty good group of people that would be willing to be trained volunteers to take care of your door duty and that kind of thing. Dads and granddads and Lions Club members in the community. So if you need to have a little extra help besides just the staff you have, I think they would be willing to do that, especially in light of the risks that we're under these days. So be glad to help out if there's a way to do that.
Very good point, thank you. And I know that we're very excited about getting our students in next week, and that's also going to give us an opportunity to have a better sense of where we are going to get some extra help. We're going to need some extra help, so thank you.
Well, I keep saying we're done with questions, but then we have more questions. I think we're officially done with questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time and thank you for your support.
Thank you. It's great. Really important. All right, moving on to our administrator reports for this evening. Looking at our pillar of our strategic plan of connecting with family, community. I'll turn it over to Superintendent Leatherwood to introduce our speakers for the evening.
I'd like to welcome upfront Director Leepan Bill and our supervisor production chef, Mr. Wurs Rayner, who's going to talk about our Connected Food Program.
Good evening, and thank you for having us this month. We're just going to jot that right in. We put our strategic plan, your strategic plan, and our strategic plan up first, because in the Connected Food Program, we see our role. Can you hear me now? I'm not quite sure. I don't have a teacher voice. Not where I've been trained, okay?
That's better.
All right, okay, I'll stand a little bit closer. We see our role in, as a Connected Food Program, our role in the strategic plan, and we take it really seriously. Promoting student and staff well-being is a big part of what we do, but we see how we can integrate into all five pillars. Our, we like to say that our mission is to prepare every student to be, for their future as eaters. Kind of taking a play on words, but also to provide students with that daily foundational support of nourishment, to be welcomed in the cafeteria and to be ready to be their best selves and to be the best learners that they can be each day. And we recognize that that's a, we have two roles, and that's one of our most important ones for our students on a daily basis. Now I'm going to do the, I'm going to start with our, we're going to start with our 2024-25 program recap. Last year was a big year for us in partnering with the organization Eat Real to continue to grow and improve what and how we serve our students. Eat Real is a national organization that sets really high standards for the health and the nutrition and the sustainability of school meals. They support schools along the way, and we have a fantastic team that's working with us. We've met their green certification level, and over the course of this next year, we're going to be working with them on strategies to achieve at least silver. Come back to you hopefully in a year and see where we're at. But they were also the ones that brought out Seattle Refined. I don't know if you guys, if you remember that video that was circulated where the Seattle Refined came out and did interviews with our high school students. And so that was a great opportunity for us to have a video made that be able to show off a little bit about what we do. And what I really loved about it is it also integrated the work of Farm to School. Farmer Arwin, the school farm manager, had a great piece in there. And our next bullet point on the program recap here is about Farm to School. We, our partner, Coopville Farm to School, the nonprofit, has been providing garden-based education here at Coopville Schools for over 10 years. And with them, in our partnership, we now have the three stools of a Farm to School program. We have procurement of local food and service in the cafeteria. We have school gardens, or in this, and also our case, we have the school farm. And then we have food education that's happening in the classrooms, it's happening in the farm, and it's happening in the cafeteria. And it's when you have that trifecta, that's where the learning for kids and really the behavior change really comes. And so working to, we continue to work collaboratively with their fantastic staff to further integrate, align our menus, align our taste testings, and the education that we're able to provide between the farm, the classroom, and the cafeteria.
Hi, everybody. I think the impact of Farm to Schools work on our campuses can't be, can't be stressed enough. I have to say, it's been remarkable to see firsthand how it has positively impacted our students and the food choices they have been making. So what's big last year, what was huge for us, was we successfully expanded our breakfast program in middle and high school campuses, which for the first time, not ever, I believe, but in a very long time, breakfast served on both campuses at middle and high, at elementary school, Coopville Schools last year. That was a milestone for us. Participation on a secondary level has averaged about Participation on a secondary level has averaged about 50 students per day for breakfast, while the elementary schools remain steady at about 140 on a daily basis. As we begin this year, one of our big goals is to explore with our new administrators to find new ways to engage secondary students more and more, right? New ways to get, how to get them interested in breakfast. So can you guys hear me? This is new. This is staring at me. In terms of operations.
I think, I think, do you need to go back and slide me, Will? Yeah, sorry.
That's okay.
There you go. That's okay. Thanks.
In terms of operations, labor efficiency has remained steady at 13.3 meals per labor hour, which is exactly where we were last year. And lunch participation also remains consistent, averaging just over 600 meals per day. We are committed to managing resources responsibly and last year reduced our food cost by eight cents per meal, which is bringing our average down to $1.43 per meal. In addition to that, we continue really on waste reduction, which we have been trying to implement at the elementary school level for now. And always try to find new creative ways how to repurpose foods. The picture on the left bottom is. It's a, it's a chicken quesadilla that's turned into a lunch, like the breakfast burrito. So it's those kind of examples. So that really, really helps us to mitigate that. And it's been, and it's been received really, really well by students. So. Looking ahead, the Connected Food Program has undergone exciting restructuring. We're still struggling with our titles. So we're working on it. Laura will step into the role as food service director, where I am confidential, continue to grow and strengthen our program. And as for me, in my new role, I'll focus on developing consistent procedures to build a program that is sustainable and less dependent on individuals. And helps us to maintain the high quality that we have all come to appreciate and set us up for the future to come.
And just a quick note about the restructuring, we're still the same team, right? And we have new roles and we have new titles, but we've been working together now. This is our seventh school year. And we continue to, we're going to continue to work to improve. And, and always, if anything, we push each other to keep improving and keep growing. And I'm thankful that Andreas, the leadership that he's provided and also that he's kicking around hopefully for as long as possible. And I'm excited to see as we continue to work together, even with new titles and new roles for where we're headed. Just looking ahead for next, this, actually this school year now, the triennial wellness assessment, this school districts are required by federal law to conduct wellness assessments of their policies and practices. I started that work last year. As part of that, we're going to be bringing back the wellness, the district-wide wellness committee that's needed to complete that assessment. The word, you probably hear a little bit more coming up, but I just wanted to make you aware of that. ECAT meal service, so with ECAT moving onto campus, the elementary campus, they requested that we contract meal services to them. They operate under the Child and Adult Care Food Program, which is a little bit different than what we operate on, but it's going to be the same food. They do family style in their classrooms. So again, it's going to be, it's going to be slightly new systems that we're going to have to work out, but we're excited. They've been absolutely fantastic, really flexible, really excited. And so I think it's going to be a good collaboration. We just, they're going to be building a slightly, we're going to be building a new system for the first couple of weeks. And finally, looking ahead this next year, Andreas and I both fully understand and recognize that we have three new principles in our district. And very much see our role as supporting them and leading their schools. And so whether that's having, making food for staff meals, whether it's adapting to new schedules. Or collaborative, you know, finding creative solutions to problems that arise. We feel that very much so that we're here to support you guys in these new roles. We're glad that you're all here and we're excited to what's to come.
When you were looking at the pillars, it reminded me of the back to school presentation on UDL and how integrated education really is in the cafeteria and how that gives students yet another opportunity to, to make some of those chain choices and, and understand like their, their own power over their own education.
It's fun to hear in major terms, eating brave, you know?
Heard that a lot.
Courage started years ago, but it has become, it's been adopted by everyone and it is one of my most favorites.
You guys are doing a wonderful job. I know that your vision, I, I just love the way that you take our mission and our vision and apply it to your work because each of us have a role in educating our students. And that looks differently from all of the people within our team, but I'm just grateful the way that you see, you see your place in this district. And I'm grateful that you're staying a team and I appreciate the sacrifices that you've made along the way to, to make food thrive and make our students thrive. So thank you. Yeah.
We'll keep challenging each other.
That's good. I appreciate that. Yeah. Thank you.
So I'm going to, I'm going to call up Principal McColl. Thank you for coming from your open house. And she's also going to talk about.
Thanks for having me. I promise I didn't run here, but I'm so out of breath. It feels like I ran here. Thanks for letting me be a little late tonight. Here to present on the pillar of connecting with family and community. Okay, so our theme for this year at Cooper Elementary School is in this school, we swim together. My staff is already annoyed at all of the puns about swimming in ocean and fish life, but they'll get used to it. So tonight, as you're well aware, it's our back to school night. It's 5:00 to 6:30. We have an amazing PTA that sponsors K-Paws ice cream, which is always a hit. I think it was like 50 students and families deep when I left just now. So it's a really fun night. Our families come, they get to meet their teachers, they drop off their school supplies. And something new this year that we continue to build upon, we had a resource fair at our transition night in the spring. So we're now having that as a tradition for any time that we have community or family events on campus. We have over 15 community groups in our NPR cafeteria tonight from Camp Casey, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Island Transit, the Health Department, youth sports, cheer, all of the above. So it's, it's a really great opportunity to make a one-stop shop for our families where they can come in, they can get a connection with our school community, but then with the broader community as well. So eventually we'll have to put a cap on it because like I said, at 15, we had tables all around and it was pretty full. But it's, it's a really, really fun night. I had so many houses and kids just coming up excited to start school. So a really good way to almost end our week. And our next night, save the date, is our student spotlight night. So this is formerly curriculum night, which is part of one of our obligations for our title and lab funding. However, we wanted to rebrand it a bit this year in our theme of bringing in more community and families and, and making it meaningful for our families to come into our school building. Not that curriculum night wasn't meaningful, but it's also a bit mysterious of if, what am I going and is it worth leaving my family and sports and dinner schedule for this kind of curriculum night event? So we're branding it student spotlight night. So staff will still very much talk about our curriculum, especially with the new pilot that we're, we're hoping to roll out. But the goal will be between now and November 6th, there'll be a capstone project that each grade level will have their students produce. So families will be able to come in, go into the classroom and see real evidence of the students' work and academic progress that they've made, in addition to discussing curriculum. So brand, brand new this year, we have partnered with iReady, our diagnostic company that we work with. So we have a rep that will be onsite for our student spotlight night in the library with Chromebook setup. So families can have access to information, you know, they receive a sheet of paper a couple of times a year that says, here's where your students at with reading or math, and here's a stretch goal. I got that same letter as a parent and I'm like, what the heck is a stretch goal? I don't know what I'm getting. So we're hoping to really empower our families and again, strengthen that community relationship with giving them the information they need to be able to support their students. Like I said, I, I got it and didn't really even know what it meant. So we want to make sure that if we have tools, we're using to the best of our ability and giving our parents information they need to support their students learning in our classrooms. Our parent teacher conferences, so we have three days. We have no students during these times where teachers are calling in families. It's optional for students to come and join our conference, but traditionally, you know, last year I was November 1st with my first day as interim. So I kind of like showed up as conferences were happening. But we have an amazing turnout. Last year it was like 90% of our parents and families come. So again, a really great opportunity that the way we have it planned strategically with our student spotlight night of we're going to have a lot of information with parents being informed of iReady, having capstone projects to talk about during these parent conferences. So we're really just trying to be strategic with our planning and our events this year so that parents feel like it's very meaningful and worthwhile to come. This is wrapping up the slide deck. So communication with families. Last year Superintendent Leatherwood brought this more newsletter that we've all embraced. So we have that weekly that goes out from our administrative secretary, Michelle Lee, and that's just a really high level, what you need to know for the week for families, our food menu, events, a quick reference guide. And then every month we send out a very comprehensive, I don't know if Brian can attest to, our monthly newsletter is extremely comprehensive that has a principal's message, our monthly character trade award winners, any holidays or observances that we're celebrating, upcoming events, and then we always end it with resources for families. Other communication I've used a lot more frequently is the final site. We use that to send email, text and voice recordings. At the end of the school year, I sent a family culture climate survey just through Google Forms, asked for preferred communication method and overwhelmingly parents said, yes, please send us text messages. So that's been a really useful tool. It's a challenge to fit 140 characters because I like to do exclamation points and add fun things, but sometimes it's just shortened to the point, but it gets the information out to families. And then of course we have a remind app that almost all of our classroom teachers use. And I think that's it. Yeah. Any questions?
The back to school night is, you know, my daughter's pretty young and she's very nervous about the next school. I mean, it's just a great way to endorse, so get to a great job there.
Yeah, thanks. It's an awesome team. They're, they're running it while I can be here. So thank you for that.
The ice cream.
It doesn't hurt. Yeah, no, and it's, it is a hearty bowl of ice cream. They have toppings and sprinkles and syrups. So yeah.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Did you want to say?
I was just going to say, I, I get smaller newsletters, both the weekly and the monthly. Is it possible for the board to get the other communication, the final site? I realize it's more probably school or student related, but it'd just be nice to know what parents are hearing.
Yeah, that would probably just be a user group on final site. You'll know when we have an emergency drill completed. Yeah, totally. Yeah, I can get you on that. Yeah. Anything else?
We just wish you a great school year. Yeah, and we're excited to see the kids again and yeah.
We're off to a great start. We had a great Tuesday and a great yesterday with our staff and we're just getting the ground running.
Thanks. Thank you so much. Yeah. All right, our owl is still cooing. We will move on to our business manager report for the evening and turn it over to Mr. Giannello.
Here it goes. This will be the school board report, finance report for today, August. You know, again, there's other values and pillars that this finances would probably support. Main ones are, again, managing resources effectively, accountability, transparency, probably the main ones that come into play here. So here we go. This is the finances as of July 31st, even though we're in August, we're just about near the end of the fiscal year, but these are through July, even though we're in August. You can see here on the cash flow, we're actually trending quite well, holding the past trend as expected. July is one of the bigger months, as will August be for revenues. Definitely receive the majority of state revenues. So we are starting to see that trend, that little uptick here in July, which is a good thing. So it looks like we're above that dotted line where we don't want to be, or we want to be above the dotted line, but don't want to get below it. That's where you can see in the past, we had to borrow from another fund to have cash available to pay the bills. So next slide. This is just the fund balance and I should stop here too and note, we are just covering this pretty brief. The detailed information is out there on board docs. But now that, we also went right through the enrollment information because that's pretty much been closed since June. So no changes there, but all that information is still available on board docs. So we're really just focusing on some key indicators as we finish up the fiscal year. And you'll see, we're talking about revenues from the state that we receive. It's the highest in July and August. So you can see that reflected in our fund balance. We have a 7.2% fund balance for July. The board policy is to have a minimum 6% fund balance. So again, this trend is looking, looking good here for finishing up the fiscal year to being able to at least meet that 6%.
One question, is the policy staying above 6% or at the end of the year or at 6%?
That's what, that's what we need to decide as a group. Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and that's something that we were thinking of bringing up to the budget committee and the next time we meet to make that decision because it's really important for us to be able to forecast that out. I, I think that's a great question.
Well, and I mean, do you see that the spread is solid all the way from November on? Yeah, and so it's just, at some point, if it's an annual number and average, then, you know, we know that dips are okay and we can come out. So.
As long as the dips aren't broke, right?
Right.
Yeah, so exactly. And I'll mention too, other districts have different, you know, ours, I believe, percent of budgeted expenditures is the 6%. There are variances on, on this, whether it's, you know, 6% of revenues or of actual expenditures or budgeted expenditures. So there's a lot of good discussion, I think, that could be had around that, as you mentioned. Along with, I think, I mean, it is a financial health indicator that we seem to gravitate toward and give a lot of weight, but there are other financial health indicators that we could discuss and get to.
And I, and I think that changing the reporting that we, that we've used has helped to give some historical context so that we can say, well, actually this is necessary or this isn't necessary, or a certain amount is necessary to get us through the entire year and to navigate the, the ups and downs of expenditures and revenues or enrollment changes or. And so I do think that having the reporting that we've had this year that has changed and given us more context is helpful to making those decisions.
No, no, I agree. Yeah, exactly. We can, we have some data to go off of and the things we can look at now that had some good discussions about what we're going to do going forward. Great. That's great. So those were some key trends that we were looking at. This is a snapshot of just expenditures now on your screen and it's expenditures and it's summarized by program. Again, on the board docs, you can get more detailed breakout of the different programs within this sort of role of regular instructions, special education, all the way through sports services. I guess the key takeaway that jumps out here, you'll notice the, this is our original budget that's still in there because our budget extension was approved at the end of July. So you'll see, we could put the revised budget numbers in for next month. So keep that in mind, but the expenditures plus the encumbrances, that balance column, if you follow your eyes over there, you'll see special education, program 20 and program 90, support services really are the two biggest where we're projected to go over budget, over the original budget. Keep in mind too, support services, that's transportation as well as maintenance grounds. But a lot to be seen too, some of the projections of actual expenditures. We just did that budget revision. But a lot to be seen too, some of the projections of actual expenditures, we just did that budget revision, the error on the safe side. So as we're closing out this year, I'm starting to see that, you know, we may not even go over that eighteen eight, our original budget. It was good. We did the budget extension because it is pretty close.
And I still have some questions about some of the encumbrances in here because when I compare the percentages to last month, there's actually some of them that are lower. Which tells me that the encumbrances weren't done correctly or something is not catching up. So not, not incorrectly, but I just don't understand the encumbrances and how, so something's still a little bit wonky.
There is, and I tell you, the, the biggest fluctuation with those is going to be July to June contracts. Because even though fiscal year here for, you know, most of our staff is September to August, we haven't reencumbered yet for July to June in the twenty five, twenty six year for our admin. Yet we're dealing with the new software cumulative where theoretically those still should have two months left to be encumbering correctly. But I think it needs a closer look to still iron out those kinks in their software. That's, that's probably the biggest, yeah, they're, they're close. They're close, but I think with the new software and that factor, there's still some kinks to iron out to make it more accurate. So let's see expenditures by summary. This is a great slide too to, came up with that communicates, you know, even though we're seeing that seven percent fund balance for the month, what does that really mean? This is one of the higher daily average expenditure that we've seen throughout the year. But really it's, you know, if everything stopped and we had that seven percent fund balance to rely on, we really have twenty two days to operate. So it really puts in highlight back to that question we're having is even that policy of six percent of budgeted expenditures, whatever it may be. Is that even sufficient?
I think the number is always going to be similar. In other words, there's always three hundred and sixty five days in a year. So you can kind of say whatever the percent is. If it's, this is seven point two and give you twenty two days, is that going to be fairly constant? So I mean, I go, it's what, thirty days here?
Thirty days would be about eight percent.
Right. Yeah, so I mean, it's like it's always gonna be.
I think last month it was ten days. So.
Yeah, right, because it was a lot lower. But I guess what I'm saying is, it's not like we'll ever get six percent and thirty days.
Oh.
It's always in, there's a direct correlation between the percentage of the number of days. So kind of going with the same question we had where we wanted to be always six percent year round is if thirty is our goal, does it have to be on November fifteenth and January twenty second and March fifth, thirty?
On those higher months.
Yeah, I mean, it goes up and down just like the percentage. So I guess we're kind of, I'm kind of saying, well, we need, we need to accept that it's going to go up and down just like the
Correct.
Fund balances.
Correct, because keep in mind with public school finances, there, there, there are some factors that we talked about. And even next month, we have a, some ideas to show it a bit more too. The way the revenues come in from the state is not level. You know, some of those graphs we presented, and it will never be level unless the state changes their funding model or procedures. And you also keep in mind that our revenues come in from September to December based on what we budget. And then it's really January to August when we true up and have actuals. So, you know, there's some consideration too to be, January to August is really our, our true up period, but we're never going to get away from the spiky graph, I call it, of the way the state gives us the revenue.
Similar in your trend reporting, I guess, when I look at that cash flow management, right? You're going to have peaks and valleys. So look at your trend reporting, make sure, make sure that you're not catching, that you're actually keeping a legitimate spread over prior year. So that view right there, we see it once a month, having that in a comparative, similar to the other charts, we look at fund balances. That gives you that next layer. Are we improving or are we staying consistent prior year? You know, spike and then at any given month, it's going to cover us for two months.
Right, yeah, it's a good way to look at it and verbalize it.
The nice part is we're going to have, I think, Director Ferrar said this is we're, because we started this trend data, we're going to continue to have this and be able to analyze that. So that we can go, what's going on here? Is this either not right or not, you know, showing as the trend has? So that's very valuable. And we did see that in a few of the trends last year and we could explain it, you know, because we knew what the trend was on prior years. We could say, well, that was due to a retirement mid-year or that was due to a cash out because of a retirement at mid-year. So those are really important to pay attention to, but it's when we want to say, wait, this doesn't look quite right. Now, how do we adjust? And that's, that's why it's important to have that trend data.
Yeah, exactly. That's what, for, for me, it's given me just a lot of confidence, like I said, having, doing this type of work monthly too, like we're talking about. When you analyze the transit, you either start asking certain questions or go, go see what the reason is for the variance. Oh, no, here's one more slide. Always forget about the, don't forget about the other small funds. We tend to focus on general fund all the time and talk a lot about general fund. It is the biggest fund. But we do have other funds that we should take a look at. This could be just a high look, level look at capital projects, debt service, associated student body fund and transportation vehicle fund. Capital projects continue to have a pretty healthy and fund balance, cash balance there. But we do continue, we're seeing some of the bigger bills come in last month and this month for some of those capital projects that have been wrapped up. And now the billings just getting caught up. We'll see one later about Des construction, I think, just finished the softball.
We just signed up on the backstop this week.
So that's a majority of that project's done. We're just holding off on retainage to make sure they finalize the thing you can do there. And we'll pay that final retainage payment. Debt service, we did make the final payment for non-voted debt. So this and for next year projected to be pretty dormant funds, no debt, which is a good thing. So that's all set. Associated student body, definitely some work to do here as the year closes out. Got some different things to look into and start talking to staff a little bit more about year end reconciliation. There's been some board questions, so keep those coming too, because that'll key me into looking at, you know, really reconciling, I know there's some general entries and transfers that probably need to be done there in that funds. Make sure we take a good look at that at year end. And then transportation vehicle funds, you'll notice there is an expenditure in there. We didn't pay that bill for that bus that we received earlier in the year. So our ending fund balance is a little lower, but coming in August, we get the depreciation payment and we'll see that go back up. Talk to Rob, we should be having a recommendation for a bus that's one of the upcoming moves.
That was actually my question. Just trying to remember and keep track of the depreciation schedule and the bus replacement. Is that your payments intended for one bus or for half of us?
So what you're looking at, that, that, let me make sure, that expenditure is for the bus that we received, but you're thinking going forward.
The revenue that we received already in August. I was just curious where.
That's for the twenty four, twenty five. So that'll be cash. So you can project that for, there should be enough in there for one bus going forward. It is weird because we get the depreciation payment in August, which is at the very end of the year. Usually takes a little while to order and receive the bus. So.
So last year we ordered a bus in September and we received it in May. We're cleaning it and now we will get a depreciation for one, but we are just a reminder to the board, we are two buses behind on our depreciation schedule. So we are going to be looking into that, whether it's one larger bus or whether we are looking at a different way to be able to get caught up on depreciation. So that we have, so we get back on schedule for, for our buses, but for now, we are looking at one more this year.
I, I live in a different world with depreciation. So they're just giving us money because of all buses. They.
Bus, big yellow bus depreciation.
Based on the depreciation schedule we have, we get a head amount to buy.
Yes.
Correct, correct. Yes.
That is how we get our funding for buses and transportation.
And keep in mind too, the legislation change that we're looking for next year is they are now adding vans to that on the depreciation schedule. Though the state, the legislation has passed for that to happen, but the state's still working on how exactly they're gonna, you know, provide funding through a depreciation model for vans. But yes, that's how it works. Any other questions? That was, that's the first.
What is the practice if an ASB account is overspent?
An ASB account is overspent? That is a great question. It depends, I would say would be the answer, but it's definitely, you know, there's a general ASB account. So if that's not the, typically the general ASB account is not going to be overspent. It's student led, so it's the student's choice. Hey, you know, is, it is an ongoing club or sport. There's the option to transfer from the general ASB account to cover that. Maybe some stipulations around it. I'd look into why, you know, why is it, is this something that's happening over and over again? Is it one type thing? Is it just because we're no longer going to do that program?
It really needs to go to the students on, on how they deal with that.
Right.
So is the structure for ASB decision making, like one ASB board that governs all of the ASB teams? Like, or is it, or is it, I mean, because we, because we used to have like class level ASB. So how is the, what's the decision making process looking like?
From what I understand, it's site, it is site based, right? First, elementary school. We even have the middle school and the high school.
Elementary is very different than middle and high school. Middle, middle school does have an ASB led by students that is student based. You can have different structures. You can have, like you were discussing, where you have different classes that have elected officers that represent. Or you can have a group of ASB that are the collective ASB executives that make the decisions. Our model at the middle and high school have been the executives have made the decisions, but they are moved to be did at the, at the high school. So, but those decisions, it's really clear there needs to be notes around decisions that are made. Those, those decisions are backed by the purchase orders. There has to be requests made to that, that exec board to, to have those decisions. So whenever there's something overspent, that would be something that would have to go to that group. It's typically not typical for something to be overspent because they're looking at their budget constantly to say, are there expenditures available in that, that pocket or for that club to be able to spend that?
Might be a cool workshop discussion at some point to do an ASB topic to just learn more about the governance. Because I mean, there's, there's a lot of different types of club within ASB and athletics and all, so it would just be interesting to learn.
I think it'd be important.
I would, I would appreciate that.
Our new advisors are saying yes.
Yeah.
And our new ASB advisor coming on, I think it's going to help.
Yeah.
And just the difference at elementary, there's not that structure. It's more with a different style.
Thank you. Any other questions about budget and finance? All right, we'll jump into our superintendent report, turn it over to Superintendent Leatherwood.
So first of all, thank you. This week, week has been extremely exciting. It was nice to see most of you at this week's opening keynote. I hope you enjoyed keeping her back as she talked really fast. And, you know, kept us entertained through that, but her message is really at the core of what we're doing here in Poohville. Accepting all of our students, ensuring that our students are able to come into a classroom and there's planning for them all. And the way that we deliver with choices and also pathways are all tied to high expectations still and high rigor. So I was excited this week to see that. And so, go ahead. So looking at our strategic plan, when we look at the pillars, I, I would like to say this week has really encompassed all of them. I started the week with all of our new employees to the school district. And in this boardroom, you know, we were able to have all of our directors, our principals, staff greeting our new employees and really wrapping our arms around them to show that belonging not only is about the students, but it's about the, the people who work here and how important it is that we greet them so that they're capable of greeting their students as they come in. As we're discussing that, this week, we've talked a lot about new pilots and curriculum and things we're bringing on board. And that's about managing our resources effectively. As Director Giannello talked about, our, our fund balance is becoming more stable. And we're looking at ways that we're actually trying to, to budget in advance so that we can say, this is what our budget is. It's about kids and their first. And this week has been about that. And as far as connecting with families in the community, you can see with Principal McCall's presentation that there's a lot of planning around this. And just as much as it is at the elementary or middle and high school, they had orientation today. They, they've been welcoming everybody and I'm super excited about the students and us empowering students at the middle school for our web program. And we were talking at the foundation this morning at the retreat about the kids picking up the phone and calling other students and saying, please come join us on Friday. And how scary that can be for an eighth grade leader, but we are empowering them to do that and to have conversations with other students. And for some of them, that was the first time. And so that was very exciting. As we're ensuring excellent instruction, that's what the keynote was about and what our workshop shop was about on Tuesday. We're talking about taking our instruction to another level, really planning for our students to enter a classroom and there be what I call access points for every student who walks through the door. We met with a family today and every person who left the room today had tears in their eyes. Because that student who in past years may have been received of, you need to probably not go into this classroom because you, you might not be able to be successful too. We're going to ensure you're successful and this is how we're doing it. The family left in tears because, you know, that, that to them is life changing. And so I, I was encouraged by that. Just promoting student and staff well-being. Mr. Barard and Ms. Kays this week took their staff to the theater, Fox Theater, and they had team building stations with their staff. And just the feedback around, this is new and this has never been done. And this was really cool. It's, it's welcoming, but it also is around promoting that staff and student well-being. And we talked about this visual around our strategic plan, and this is part of what you'll hear from my goals later, is around, you know, the, the supports in that water is, is everything we do as a community and fiscally to support the students. And up in those mountains are our students. There, we're empowering them. We have two new board reps that will be on next month. I'm very excited about. We're promoting staff and student well-being, so everybody is there and present to be able to support that. And then we're ensuring excellent instruction. So very exciting to start the new year with those things. And as we enter this year, we're talking about Hope Rising. And, and last year I introduced Hope and how Hope is something that can be taught. It's not a wish. It's not a thought or a feeling. It actually can be taught. And this year we're elevating that to Hope Rising. And in our staff day, those of you who were able to attend, or if you've heard from that staff day, our keynote was inspirational. Now, going over to our bus drivers this morning and talking to them, they were, they saw themselves in that keynote. They said, you know, we are the first degree, we are the last to see our, our students and we appreciate it. And where's that book? And each one of them got a copy of their book and, and they're excited to read it because they understand that their contribution to this, this district is going to make a difference for our kids as they come to school. The lunch that the foundation provided, I had several staff members come up after that lunch and say, thank the foundation for their contribution. This was the best lunch we've ever had for welcome back, but it also shows how much this community supports the work we're doing and how much they care for us. The workshops that we had that afternoon, which I know you weren't able to attend, but really dug into the work that we're going to be doing all year long. but really dug into the work that we're going to be doing all year long. And really helps to support the high standards and providing pathways for our students, but also providing our teachers with the how and, and the why. And so we're excited for that. Going on to our site days, I was able to go to our different sites and see our welcome back. And it was, it brought me to tears because I started my day at the middle and high school and up on the screen was collective teacher efficacy. And collective teacher efficacy, if we, if we have collective teacher efficacy, we know from Hattie's research that is the number one indicator for student success. And we can grow students almost or nearly four years within a year if we truly have it. And that was being talked about. We talked about how that leads to self-efficacy within kids. And then I marched over to, to elementary school and the first slide that comes up is collective teacher efficacy. And I was like, did they talk? No, they hadn't even talked about it, but that's the alignment that our administrators are coming with. They really truly believe in the work and I'm super excited to see that happen. Along with, with the multi-tiered system of supports. Principal McColl had her teams digging into tiered supports and how behavior and social emotional tie to academic success and how culture systems and learning really truly supports our students to be the best they can. That's all the work we're doing. And then ultimately I put on their belonging, whether it's a staff member, a student. We all need to feel like we belong and, and that's what the work is this year around Hope Rising. So finally, the last part on that is student support. Our school improvement plans, I heard from all of the principals in their welcome back, talking about how our student, our school improvement plan and our data is going to tie to all of this, which is super exciting to hear because our staff are actually hearing from day one, we're looking at data. We're looking at what, what it says and we're try, we're having that drive our decisions at each school. And so we're going to continue with training and coaching. We're very excited to come to a tentative agreement with our teachers' unit to bring on the Danison framework. So we're moving from Marzano to the Danison framework and we're going to be training that for all of our new teachers this year. Anyone who's on the comprehensive evaluation will be coaching them on that. And then next year we'll be moving all staff to the Danison framework. But this whole year will be a learning year with the framework itself. And then we also have the opportunity as a leadership team, as an administrative team to meet weekly and continue our leadership development as we build the year. So we're very excited. So as we move forward and we're, we're looking at Hope Rising, knowing that we're putting our students first, that's number one. We, if you were there and you heard the keynote, it's around educational equity. Equity does not mean equal. We have to provide our students with their needs and meet their needs at rigorous high levels. Providing that student support and then also planning for their future, like looking at what are the needs of their future and ensuring that we're, we're aligning with those using data. Any questions? We are super excited.
I had a great time going to back-to-school session. And I think even in the work, you know, at the board level, I, I clung to the idea of like firm goals and flexible pathways. And, and what are those firm goals? And, you know, I think at our level, like we are working with different types of resources to accomplish our goals. You know, what sort of financial resources do we have? What type of people do we have? What type of facilities do we have? All of these things have to contribute to, are we preparing students for their future by providing them with a strong educational foundation? And it was great to like, you know. She was funny.
I do have, you mentioned the web program starting tomorrow. Well, the sixth graders and meet the eighth graders tomorrow, it's a big deal. Ariana did come to our foundation retreat this morning and since we had funded the start of this and a very enthusiastic presentation about it, everybody was excited. And she ended up inviting us in the morning to stop by. And I thought, I'm assuming that that invitation would also extend to the board. I, I think the biggest thing is going to happen about oh, 10 after eight pursuit for the kickoff.
It's, yeah, it's the opening assembly. If you can be there about 10 after eight, it would be wonderful. We would, we would love for you to be there, see it come alive. Thank you, Director.
It's funny, I remember being in upper elementary and hearing from other parents that had students that had gone on to secondary and saying, here's nothing. You just drop off your sixth grader first day of school and, you know, they're, so I love, I love the transitions. They're so important. Little growing people. I also noticed on your slide that you had something about the facility task force.
Oh, excited to get over that, go back. We're up at Director, sorry about that.
You mentioned it, it was just.
I do want to mention that a little bit more though, so thank you. And the planning for their future, which was the last piece there. And we're going to be putting together a district facility task force and really look at centering that on the needs of our district and what our facilities, facility needs are. And so I'll be working to reach out to community members, parents, staff, students, Lindy. And so, you know, just ensuring that we have a really diverse group to begin looking at what are our future needs. And we want to be looking at what are our future, you know, 10, 20, 30 years down the road so that we can really have a plan for our future of a Coopville. And so I'll be reaching out to people during the month of September. We'll start our first task force in October. But if all of you have ideas or thoughts around that, or if anyone listening at home or in the audience have ideas around who would be good for that community, please email me and make sure that I know.
I just want to say thank you. I know you've been working hard. We've had humongous grants that you've been writing, he and Brian have been writing this summer. We've had three contracts open for bargaining. We're really trying to work on aligning our budget, you know, a strategic plan. And that's just scratching the surface of, of your summer. And so now we're about to get into the school year, so I just wanted to take an opportunity to say thank you. It's a lot, so thank you. Welcome to Coopville and bond planning on top of that. So wow, okay, we need to dial it down, don't we? But just appreciate your work.
Thank you. And there's a lot of enthusiasm across the board. Thank you for that.
All right, any other questions? Okay, move on to board members' reports and we'll start down at the end with Director Sherman.
Yeah, unfortunately I missed the events earlier this week. Can't miss the event tomorrow, but make more of those. I did, through some gentle nudging, make the friend of Evie dinner, which was great.
I didn't gentle nudge you, did I?
Ended up being great. We got to enjoy some of, some of Laura's, various foods there, which, coming on the board and being in the community for a long time, heard a lot about the food program. Not always great feedback, but seeing what they're putting together here and just kind of the dynamics of how that program works and seeing how it's affecting the school is, is pretty phenomenal and just happy to see that. So outside of that, I don't have much of an update. I did have somebody mention the pile the other day in a positive light, saying it was clean. And they took some of the brush out of there. So whoever did that, they wanted me to send a thank you out.
Our groundskeeper.
Yeah, so they, they did call it out and they thanked me for it for some reason, so.
Well, they're, they're going to see Weave Mountain continue to evolve over the next few months. And, and we should have some resolution through the company that, that worked on the tennis court. So, yeah, and thank Mr. Bonacci for, for cleaning it up.
Well, I hope your response was, you're welcome.
He also has been scraping all of the weeds off of all the curbs. I just want to hug him, so thank you. Thank you so much, Director Merwin.
Well, let's see, as far as actual legislation, not too much going on right now. Legislators are kind of catching their breath. I would, however, for the WASDA, the, our general assembly is September 20th, totally virtual. That's where all the proposals that have been proposed for WASDA policy will be voted on. Did, did you get the email that had the handbook, which has all those policies? I think you did. If you didn't, you should have an email from WASDA. If not, I can, I can email you that. The, the deal is every proposal, and there aren't that many this year, is, comes with a recommendation from the legislative committee, WASDA either support it or don't support it. I guess what I would ask you to do is take a moment, and take more than a moment, but look through it. And if you see one that you object, you know, you think, I'm not too sure about their recommendation, let me know. It's something that we should, as a board, we have to decide what we want to do about. Because what it is, we, I will be attending that September 20th meeting virtually as our representative. We as a board get a vote, every board gets a vote, it's not a matter of numbers. So I would need to know if there's any, I won't tell you, I won't tell you, I've looked at it and tell you what I think about all the recommendations. So I don't want to bias you, but if there are any that you think we should, we should talk about. It, it looked fairly.
Agreeable.
I don't know if Nanny Pammy's right, but I mean, look, yeah, fairly agreeable this year of, of the.
Not too aggressive.
I didn't see any, last year there were maybe a few that were mildly controversial. I didn't really see any particular that. That would be.
I did want to add on to Director Merwin's comment just on the legislation. We did have US Representative Rick Larson come out and as a response to his connecting with Director Merwin and myself, he did write a letter on our behalf to provide a support for the grant that we're writing. And so we have high hopes. We, we did have a little bit of a glitch in the grant and I reached out to his office and they're also doing additional support and contacting to ensure that our needs are met for Coopville. So we're very appreciative of that as well. Let's see, we've got, budget committee is planning to meet and sort of discuss as we go into this new school year, touching back to our purpose and terms that were established last year, making sure that those are still something that is beneficial for our district and, and seeing how we are meeting those goals. So that'll be good, hopefully coming up soon. We did meet with each of our student representatives and hopefully they're feeling very oriented, full of information before they come in and join us as advisory voting members starting next month. And I just wanted to say that the retreat was wonderful. It's always such a great opportunity to be able to reflect on the past school year, look forward to the next school year. And the board self-assessment is an increasingly useful tool, I think. I love seeing the way that we can see the progress that we're making in so many domains of actually becoming the kind of team that's going to serve our district as best as we can. So that's really fun. And then my last comment was just that, strong work on all the bargaining. Thank you to all of the unions, the ability of our staff to come together with my boys and bargain collectively so that their representatives are representing their needs and that we are all aware of the best way to get those needs met to make this a good workplace is just an important part of what our public employees, you know, deserve. And so we came through that process and we can start this school year with that done.
Also, I'd like to wish you a happy yesterday birthday.
I have to wish you a happy tomorrow birthday.
Sandwich day.
And Director Giannolo, happy birthday today.
That is actually really cool. That's fun.
What about happy birthday to the daughter? And my husband. And then tomorrow's my son.
That's fun. Well, thank you so much, Director Connor.
Well, what she said about our finance committee, I'm excited, we, we are going to regroup with the board of us, she and I and Superintendent Brian, and kind of look at the history of information we now have, the trend analysis that we have, and take a look to see what is it we want to hear about at the board meetings, bring that back to the board and see what you're wanting is being met or if there's other ways to go about that. I think it's going to be a different kind of a time when we do have reference points that we can use and do some good measurement. So anyway, we'll be getting on to that here shortly. And I just wanted to comment also on the, the retreat that we had. I, I'm excited about the planning that we heard from our superintendent and about Hope Rising and the first day sitting and listening to what was going on. It's just so exciting to me that we're focusing on how we teach, not just what we teach. And that's going to make it be better. And I'm just, I just can hardly wait for this year. I, I think lots of people are excited about it and they'll be more excited as they realize how much more effective they can be by, by using these, these tools and methods to improve what we have kids learning. It's really a good time, I'm excited about it for Coopville schools.
I just wanted to make a few comments about the retreat. Obviously, we had two guest presenters aside from our own conversation. And that was from Winaha Group, which is working on with Superintendent Leatherwood to put together a facilities task force and talk about potential bond plans for the future of our district, potentially new elementary school, but a lot of that conversation will fall to the facility task force. And we also had a presentation from Piper Sandler, who we did approve, a sort of agreement to work with them on bond underwriting. And they went through a great presentation about upcoming levies that we have. And we will need to be looking at a levy which pays for many of the things in our district and will be working those details out, but that will be coming up before a bond proposal would be coming up. And so those were two great presentations, thanks for organizing that. We also talked about our super, our superintendent evaluation standards for this coming year and what we're planning to focus on. After some reflection, we decided to keep two of the standards the same that we focused on last year. So we decided to keep focusing on standard one, which is surrounding mission, vision and core values. We also are going to keep focusing on standard three, which is around curriculum instruction and assessment. And then we decided to change the last standard for the superintendent evaluation process to switch to standard five, which is professional capacity of school personnel. And that does align with some of the changes of evaluation and looking at just how we're teaching and student growth goals. So that was what we have agreed on. And then we will be looking at the goals tonight and approving superintendent goals that align with these different standards. We also talked about our goals and the standards that we're going to be focusing on as a school board. Spend some time in self-reflection and we'll kind of get into those a little bit when we approve board goals and new business. Thank you to Director Pereira for organizing our student board rep training. We're excited to bring them on and we'll, we'll be explaining about the advisory voting process and a little bit what that looks like as our student board reps join us and give advisory votes to our motions. We are excited about student voice and something that matters to us and we value. So we're looking forward to having them in the fold. Policy, we did not really do much this summer, as I mentioned, it was just busy. It was just busy. So as the school year starts, we will get a policy committee meeting on the books. It looks to me from an email that I got that they're going to be changing the, the language around WASDA policies. So it's not going to be essential policies anymore, they have different terminology. So as we get into our next policy meeting, we'll go through, go through some of those changes and then we'll bring that to the next workshop for everyone to hear about. And when we do approve our board calendar, just wanted to note that we talked about changing our workshop meetings. So those will no longer be the week. So, those will no longer be the week prior to the board meeting, but two weeks prior to the board meeting. And part of that conversation is just allowing time for any of that discussion and any of the changes that might need to come onto the agenda to happen. And so, just as a note, that'll be on our board calendar, but just for people to make note of. I think, I also wanted to mention that I was invited to speak on a panel about school, school budget and finance, and that's going to happen on September 20th. And I was invited, invited by the Legal Women Voters to speak on this panel, and I will be speaking to other Legal Women Voters members. And I think there will be some press and Clyde Shavers, Representative Clyde Shavers, will also be attending. So, I'm planning to meet to make sure I have my, you know, information correct. So, just wanted to let you know that that's happening. Okay, that's my board report. You don't have any correspondence this month? Am I correct? Okay. There is no old business since we don't have any policy adoptions during the summer, but we'll jump into new business. And first item on new business is approval of the 2025-26 Board Goals. And as I mentioned, after spending a bit of time in self-reflection during the retreat, we decided to keep two of our goals the same as last year, which focus on setting goals and expectations for student success within our strategic plan and also focusing on measuring and assessing academic progress. We did introduce two new goals for this year. One that focus on, focuses on working with the superintendent to create conditions for student and staff success, including curriculum, technology, and facilities. And a second that focuses on how we engage and communicate with our community to work proactively, to disseminate information, and to gather diverse inputs on issues that are being considered. So, we kept two the same, two new ones, and there's any comments or emotion?
I would move to approve the board goals for 2025-26.
So, it's been moved and seconded to approve the board goals for 25-26 school year? Is there any discussion?
Thank you so much for working on this, I think you really captured what we were talking about. And I think that four, four goals pulled from all of the superintendent standards will help focus us. And I think that these are all topics that I'm excited to see.
Again, just really helpful to have the retreat and have the opportunity to talk about the superintendent goals and the board goals and make sure that we're integrated in our expectations, and that was well worth it.
Yeah, and I would say that, you know, just like the superintendent operates on standards, the school board also has standards that we get from our professional organization, and we have five where you have eight, I think. And so, we also want to connect our work with the standards that align with board governance. Okay, any more discussion? Typically, in the future, you will hear us ask for an advisory vote to our students right about now, and then we will ask the question. So, hearing motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. I'm practicing also, so, thanks. Jumping into our next item of new business, which is approval of the 25-26 Superintendent Goals. Do you want to speak to those? Sure, okay.
So, and as Director White discussed, and we are looking at two of the same goals, or I'm looking at that, really coordinating with the, this board to ensure that our goals align. Standard One around mission, vision, and core values. We really want to begin transforming and leading a comprehensive data-driven review and refine it, refinement of our district's strategic plan. We want to embed key performance indicators in our strategic plan so that we have data measures tied to the strategic plan. Right now, we have the pillars and we have our, our beliefs, but those key indicators are missing from that plan. So, the work this year will be really to develop that and it directly aligns with the board goals as well. In Standard Three, we're looking at developing and implementing, or I'm looking at this, I keep saying we because ours align so well, but implementing that comprehensive learning framework and ensuring that we have guaranteed viable curriculum, that our, our curriculum, our, our staff has it in front of them, they can unpack the standards and, and like you heard on Tuesday, go from there to plan instruction for all kids. And this is going to be an integral part to be able to align to our strategic, strategic plan. And so, I'm really excited about Standard Three, but also the, the piece of ensuring that our, our teachers and staff have the high-quality professional development and coaching to go alongside that. And then the last standard that we discussed was professional capacity of school personnel and looking at establishing and implementing a comprehensive, research-based professional development and evaluation system, moving from Marzano to Danielson. It's going to be a, a huge undertaking for our staff because we are going to be looking at that framework. I especially like the Danielson framework because she has updated it and she's ensured that there's the equity and inclusion piece of it, which ties directly to universal design for learning. And so, as we start unpacking that this year with staff and training our, all of our new staff this year, by next year, we'll have 100% of our staff on board with that framework, which truly the state looks at it as, that's the coaching piece of what we do to tie to the State Eight criteria, which is the evaluation system. A lot of people get confused and say, we evaluate on Danielson and we, we really use Danielson as a way to coach and support and help teachers so that they're the best they can for our students. Yes, it ties to the State Eight, but there is a different set of criteria that that ties to, and we call it a crosswalk. So, we're excited to, to work with that, but that's why we chose Standard Five. And you'll see all of that with the data come alive this year, which is great.
Yeah, I think that part of the discussion that we had during retreat was, you know, that it was important to keep some of the same standard and some of the same goals because last year we sort of built some foundational, you know, practices to be able to take further steps with the goals. And so, we weren't ready to, you know, abandon that. I feel like last year we got this data dashboard, and so now we can actually say, how can we make improvements and set some measurable goals around those improvements with the data that we're starting to gather. And so, it was important to keep some of those goals and to continue to step forward in building upon what we have, so, thank you.
I'm excited, every time I hear data-driven and measurable goals, I can't wait until we start reporting to our community. We have this many teachers that were trained in this, and this is what improved the student learning. Math scores went up like this or whatever. I mean, we haven't had that opportunity to share that with our community or to focus on it enough. And I think it's important that our staff are going to be able to see what they are able to do and improve student learning, and that our community is able to see what they are able to do. It's going to be a great time.
And the biggest benefit is to our kids, I mean.
Well, that's it.
Yeah, we want to prepare them for their future by providing them that strong educational foundation, so we just.
That we can measure.
Yeah, we want to continue to grow that.
Perfect.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the 2025-26 Superintendent Goals enthusiastically.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to enthusiastically approve the 2025-26 Superintendent Goals. Is there any discussion? At this time, I would be asking for an advisory vote from our student reps. Once we have that, we'll be calling the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
And if you don't want a little more enthusiasm, you go, girl.
Can't wait, can't wait. All right, next item on new business is approval of the 2025 through 2026 Board Calendars. As I mentioned, board meetings will remain on the last Thursday of each month, but the board workshops will not, will take place two weeks prior to the board meeting instead of one, as they currently are now.
I move to approve both the board meetings' calendar and the board walkthrough schedule for 2025-26.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the 2025 through 2026 Board Calendar and Walkthrough Schedule. Is there any discussion? Advisory vote from our student reps. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, and then Item D on new business is approval of the Coopville Education Association Collective Bargaining Agreement. This is a two-year agreement from September 1st, 2025, through August 31st, 2027. As you'll see in Board Docs, this is not a full version of the contract, but rather the agreed-upon changes to the contract, and then that will get put into a full contract. So, if you want to see the full contract, you'd have to get that off of the school district website and then look at the changes that are posted in Board Docs to see the whole document. As mentioned, when we approved Superintendent Leatherwood's contract, I feel it important to share with our community the financial side of this collective bargaining agreement. While there were a variety of changes made to the contract, the pay changes are as follows. So, for staff who are still moving up on the negotiated pay scale, they'll receive a 3% increase as they step up to the next placement. And then they'll also receive the Washington State Implicit Price Deflator, which for the 25-26 year is an additional 2.6%, correct? 2.2.5? Is that, is that decided, the IPD?
Yeah.
2.5? Okay, thanks. If staff are at the top of the pay scale, they'll receive the 2.5 pay increase only. This is a two-year agreement, and for the following year, certificated staff will receive an additional percent on top of what was mentioned for this year. Obviously, we are a publicly funded institution. Our resources are limited, which can make bargaining tough sometimes. And I don't look at bargaining as a win or a loss for the union or for the, the district, but about making sure that our kids win, they're the ones we're here for. And we remain committed to working alongside our staff toward our goal of preparing our students for their future through providing a strong educational foundation.
I'll move to approve the Coopville Education Association Collective Bargaining Agreement, as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Coopville Education Association Collective Bargaining Agreement for September 1st, 2025, through August 31st, 2027. Is there any discussion?
Oh, just like I said earlier, the fact that we had unions and that we can have this process is really important. And I also just really want to thank you, along with the union leaders, for a lot of hard work over this summer.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries.
I didn't hear.
Yeah. Thank you for keeping me on my toes, Director Merwin. All right, moving on to our next collective bargaining agreement, which is Item E, Approval of General Teamsters Local Union Number 231 Collective Bargaining Agreement. This is also a two-year agreement, September 1st, 2025, through August 31st, 2027. As mentioned above, I do think it's important to share with our community the financial side of these agreements. And so, the pay changes in the Teamsters contract reflect a 2.5% pay increase during the 2025 through 2026 school year for all but Step One members. For the 26-27 school year, a new wage scale has been designed to include a freeze on Step One with new wage rates for Steps Two through Six. Members will step up on the wage scale as outlined in the agreement and receive no less than the implicit price deflator for the 26-27 year as an increase. Again, thank you, and we look forward to working together with our team towards our goal of preparing students for their future.
I move to approve the General Teamsters Local Union Number 231 Collective Bargaining Agreement.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the General Teamsters Local Union Number 231 Collective Bargaining Agreement as presented. Is there any discussion?
I guess I just wanted to note that something I saw throughout the document was updating and clarification and almost modernizing of the language. And it feels like it's probably really easy to just roll over year to year, and so, seeing those changes reflects just so much work that must have gone into that conversation. There, it was a great conversation and a collaboration and partnership to update language that some of the language was from possibly the 90s and, and really making sure it was relevant to our practice today, so it was, it was great.
I will ask for our student board member input at the next meeting, but for now, I'll call the question. It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, next is the approval of Resolution 2025-09, which is National Hispanic Latino Heritage Month.
I'd like to bring forward the honorary, I'm going to call her the honorary because she is, she has done a lot of work in several areas. She's our social worker, Ariana Gardner, and she's going to read about this resolution.
Great, thank you. And so, yes, I have the honor of working with many of our Hispanic and Latino families. I also have the honor of reading this tonight. Whereas, National Hispanic Heritage Month is observed annually from September 15th through October 15th to celebrate the history, heritage, traditions, and countless contributions of Americans whose ancestors came from Mexico, Spain, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month begins on September 15th, a date significant for marking the independence anniversaries of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua, while Mexico and Chile also celebrate their Independence Days on September 16th and September 18th, respectively. And whereas, National Hispanic Heritage Month was originally established in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week by President Lyndon Johnson and later expanded to a full month in 1988 by President Ronald Reagan to provide sufficient time to honor the rich cultural heritage and significant contributions of Hispanic and Latino Americans. And whereas, Hispanic and Latino Americans have made invaluable contributions to the prosperity, strength, and culture of the United States in fields including education, science, technology, government, arts, business, military service, and community leadership. And whereas, Coopville School District serves approximately 950 students across Central of the island, including the historic community of Coopville, with Hispanic-Latino students compromising 16% of our student body, representing a vital and valued part of our school community. And whereas, the district recognizes that students thrive when their cultures, languages, and histories are seen, valued, and celebrated. And that creating inclusive learning environments benefits all students and strengthens our educational community. And whereas, Hispanic Heritage Month provides an opportunity to share the historical contributions of Hispanic Americans who have significantly impacted education, including pioneers such as Roberto Alvarez, whose groundbreaking, groundbreaking case, Roberto Alvarez versus Lemon Grove School District, was the first successful school desegregation case in American history. And whereas, we honor Hispanic Americans who have served our communities and nation as civil rights trailblazers, including Cesar Chavez at Dolores Huerta and countless educators, leaders, artists, scientists, entrepreneurs, and advocates who have shaped our past and continue, continue to inspire future generations. And whereas, the district values the principle of femalismo, emphasis on family, and respects the strong family bonds, community connections, hard work, resilience, and resourcefulness that characterize Hispanic, Hispanic and Latino culture and enrich our American society. And whereas, Coopville School District is committed to promoting educational excellence for all students while fostering an inclusive environment that celebrates diversity, cultural heritage, and the unique perspectives that each student brings to our learning community. And whereas, the district recognizes the importance of providing educational opportunities that prepare all students for success in an increasingly diverse and interconnected world. And whereas, celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month aligns with our mission to create learning environment, environments where every student feels connected, supported, and empowered to achieve their full potential. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Coopville School District Board of Directors joins, joins. that the Coopville School District Board of Directors joins joins communities throughout the United States in recognizing and celebrating September 15th through October 15th as National Hispanic Latino Heritage Month. And be it further resolved that the district encourages all schools, staff, students, and families to participate in activities and educational opportunities that honor the rich culture, heritage, traditions, and ongoing contributions of Hispanic and Latino Americans to our community and nation. And be it further resolved that the district reaffirms its commitment to providing inclusive, culturally responsive education that values and celebrates the diversity of all students and families in our school community. And be it further resolved that the district will continue to work collaboratively with families, staff, and community partners to create educational environments where students of all backgrounds can thrive academically, socially, and culturally. And be it further resolved that copies of this resolution will be distributed to all district schools, posted on the district website, and shared with the local community organizations to promote awareness and celebration of National Hispanic Latino Heritage Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Ariana.
I'll move to approve Resolution 2025-09 for National Hispanic.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2025-09, National Hispanic Latino Heritage Month. Any discussion?
I was very happy that the resolution explained why it started on September 15th. I'm glad to know that.
I also love to know that 16% of our students apply here. And again, I think about my own children and their interactions with children in school and how important it is to have diversity and how how meaningful it is to our community. We had a native speaker come to the museum and she was like, I don't want my food all the same color. You know, I want it to be different and this is what we want for for where we live and serve. And so I appreciate that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item G, which is approval of the curriculum pilot for Coopville Elementary School. Looking to amplify CKLA. And I'll turn it over to Superintendent Leatherwood to introduce our speaker.
Sure. We talked a little bit at our retreat about the importance of this pilot. We formally had Journeys, which was published in 2010. And it has since gone out of print. And so Principal McColl is going to discuss the pilot, why they derived up this pilot, and kind of moving forward what their plans are at the elementary school.
Hello again. This is pretty detailed, maybe a little bit wordy, but I wasn't sure exactly what all the information you wanted. So I'll go over what I have to present. And this really just falls under all of the categories, but specifically ensuring excellent instruction for our students. Thank you. So in summary, the mouthful of CKLA stands for Core Knowledge Language Arts. So we're proposing a K through 5 pilot for CKLA through Amplify ELA Curriculum for this school year. The decision addresses a critical gap in our current literacy instruction and it aligns with our district's strategic commitment to ensuring excellent instruction for our students. As Superintendent Leatherwood Leatherwood just alluded to, there was challenges with the existing curriculum. And again, I will pretty soon not be able to use this as an excuse anymore. But coming in November, it was kind of like starting hitting the ground running, where are our deficits, where are our strengths, where do we need to improve? Instruction at the elementary school. And one of the things that was very loud and clear was that our Journeys curriculum was ranking really poorly on Ed Reports. It had failed in a couple of different areas. It was significantly outdated and lacked current research research-based practices. And what I heard loud and clear from our teachers is that it did not, in their opinion, adequately adequately prepare our students for the SBA state testing. So they were having to find themselves supplementing instruction for students when we have a curriculum that we shouldn't really need to have to be supplementing for them to be able to succeed on the state test. So again, that was lacking in alignment with the curriculum and the state standards. And there was limited resources that provided us opportunities to differentiate instruction for our struggling readers. So even though we had this Journeys curriculum, our teachers were still having to pull a ton of supplemental resources to be able to provide the instruction that our students deserve. So our process, again, pretty fast and furious from November to now. But we had an instructional team largely driven through our building leadership team. So there's one rep from each grade level and a lot of our decision-making started in that committee and then spread out to their grade levels. They did research on multiple ELA curricula, which was a new process for a lot of them to dive into Ed Reports. And at first, I think it was a little bit intimidating and then it was, oh, this is really cool. We can see what's available to us and how it's ranking like state standards and feasibility for us. So the the two that rose to the top are CKLA and Wonders. There were additional evidence-based programs that we looked into, but those are two that rose to the top. The selection criteria we looked at was how well it aligned to our our standards. Research-based literacy instruction. Did it have support for diverse learners? How well would it be integrated into our already existing professional development? And really the cost effectiveness and how feasible it will be to implement in such a short timeframe. So through Wonders and CKLA, CKLA rose to the top. So why why them? We tried to use as many research-based decision factors as possible. You may have heard or remember Patty Kimmel, Special Services Director, talking about Orton Gellingham. So we proudly have seven staff members at the elementary school getting trained in Orton Gellingham, which is a supplemental curriculum that will is really designated to help with our students struggling in reading, specifically dyslexia. So a shining factor for our staff from CKLA is that it integrates seamlessly with the OG training that's already been provided. So that was a big selling point. It supports structured literacy approach, essential for our readers that are struggling. It provides systematic phonics instruction aligned with our professional development investments. Another kind of bonus point for us was Southwoodby has this curriculum adopted. And so we not only have colleagues in the neighboring district that speak very highly of it. We have parents that are employees of our district whose children go to Southwoodby and they have a parent perspective of it and spoke very highly of it as well. So the strengths, very, very strong Ed Reports for quality alignment. It's a comprehensive scope and sequence. There's built-in assessments and progress monitoring tools, which really align to what we spoke to earlier about our MTSS framework and making sure that we're having that tier one, tier two support. And then just a rich content knowledge foundation. So our implementation framework, sorry, it was a long night last night and I find myself just fumbling over words. So our pilot structure is a little bit unique because typically you don't pilot at a whole entire building. But because of all the reasons I just mentioned, we're looking at K5. Because if we were just to choose a grade level, a group of teachers, the rest of the teachers would still be in the same boat that we were last year struggling supplementing. So again, it's unique for us for this year, but we are looking at a pilot structure of K5. It would be for the full academic year, the entire scope and sequence of all of the units with ongoing professional development and coaching. And we have a PD implementation guide map planned out with the CKLA Amplify reps already. So it is an all-year-long ongoing PD for our staff with this curriculum. Throughout our pilot year, our team at the elementary school will continue to strengthen, bless you, and collect student achievement data, gather feedback from teachers. We started peer observations last year. We will continue with peer observations, which will only be strengthened with having curriculum alignment, both vertical and horizontal. We're going to continue to monitor that alignment with state standards. We were able to make a pretty strong claim that we didn't feel Journeys fit the bill, but we want to make sure that CKLA also does at the end of the year when we do our state testing. We'll have a documentation of our implementation successes and challenges to learn from. And like I just mentioned, assess that SBA preparedness at the end of the year. So our decision timeline is that ongoing data collection and monitoring. Our goal would be at the end of the year, a formal presentation to our IMC, our Instructional Materials Committee. And then the final decision, of course, is board approval based on the IMC recommendation. So after we collect all of that, we're not saying this is a full meal deal. We're going to go to CKLA regardless, but we're going to take the entire year to learn from it, collect data, and work through our IMC. Our expected outcomes are really all around students. So this will improve foundational literacy skills, better preparation for state assessments, increase engagement through content instruction. So part of an adoption process for curriculum is we're looking at the material that we're providing to students. Is this relatable to them? Is there an equity element? Do they see themselves represented in the books that we're giving them and the stories that we're telling them? And so far, what we've seen and learned from CKLA is that it is very diverse and very rich in experiences that our students, we feel, can relate to. And that enhanced support for struggling readers in alignment with that OG was was a really big benefit for our staff. It aligns with our current professional development of UVL and MTSS focus. It provides access to high-quality instructional materials. From what we've seen in the sample packs that the rep has sent us, it's it's really great quality. Collaborative learning communities with neighboring districts. So there's the already been talks of partnering with some teachers in Southwoodby, learning from from them and sharing ideas. And ultimately, a clear scope and sequence for instruction. We started that at the end of last year. We had our very first vertical alignment PLC where our second grade team met with third grade team, fourth grade team, fifth grade team. And that's only going to be strengthened when we have a comprehensive or cohesive curriculum. Because last year, fourth grade team did something with fifth grade had to supplement so much that this really didn't align and they weren't building upon one another as best as they could. Our next steps is here, board approval for our pilot implementation, which is essentially the purchase of it. The Coopville Elementary building budget is funding almost half of it. And then the district would have to make up the other half. We would have professional development, like I mentioned, for all K5 teachers throughout the entire year. Material procurement and classroom setup. So that's working with Director Smith, making sure that we have a rollover and students are logged into Clever and they have rosters and everything set up. Just the baseline data collection before implementation. We started that work yesterday, making sure that we have last year's scores from our students to set us up for success already. Ongoing monitoring throughout the school year and then ultimately a pretty little package with a bow on it of a comprehensive evaluation for the IMC. Oh, in closing, okay, this is just kind of like, huh, in closing. The administration recommends approval of the CKLA Amplified ELA Curriculum Pilot for K5, recognizing this as a strategic investment in our students' literacy development and alignment with our district's commitment to provide an educational foundation that allows every student to reach their potential. This pilot will provide the data and experience necessary to make an informed, long-term curriculum adoption decision that best serves our Coopville students and community.
And I just wanted to clarify, because we did discuss this at our retreat a little bit. We don't typically put a pilot toward, you know, to for board approval. But because of this instance, one, we had outdated curriculum that we would not have been able to renew because it's no longer in print and needing that in all grade levels. That's why we we felt that it'd be important for the board to make the decision around the pilot so that we could move forward. And then second, just a clarification piece, when we look at Ed Reports, Ed Reports is based off the former edition. Typically, when a curriculum like this goes and and updates its materials, which it is currently in the 2025 series, they'll do another Ed Report. So we'll be seeing that later this year. It typically even better aligns to Ed Reports. So it's already all in green. One of the things that I liked about this when I looked at it was it has a clear understanding of how to teach kids to read. And so when we look at phonemic awareness, phonics, looking at multi-syllabic decoding, it it uses the science of reading, which we know is best practice and aligns that for all of our learners and not just some of our learners, which ties directly to our our goal this year, which is ensuring that all of our students and our our teachers are prepared to ensure we're providing instruction for everybody. So just a few things on on Principal McColl's piece. And it this fall, the IMC committee meets will be looking at this throughout the year to ensure that it's not just the end of the year, but throughout the year progress towards.
Yeah, and thank you for adding that important detail of not only was Journeys outdated, it was it was ended. We couldn't even renew it or buy more. They had discontinued it. So that was the the big driving factors, even if we wanted to save money or time and order more Journeys, we couldn't.
This is one of those projects that I can hardly wait to hear the end result.
You talked about you talked about like what you're using for that baseline measurement. I heard SBA. Is there something else that you're using?
Yeah, our DIBL scores for our lower elementary, our SBA. We've also, it's still in the in the early stages, but at the end of the school year, I went into the homeroom data dashboard and pulled reports that aligns with students attendance, academics, and discipline. So yesterday, each grade level received the PLC binder, which included a students of concern list that was curated from homeroom. Their applicable assessments, whether it was DIBLs or SBA.
Or I-ready.
And I-ready, yeah, exactly. Which you saw at the end of was that June report of our I-rated data and SBA data.
And then, like, when you're putting plans together for a pilot, like, what team are you using within your school to do that?
Through our building leadership team. We would love for an instructional leadership team to be curated. I had many moments in the last month where I thought. Principal, I guess I wish there was one more of me. So I I had proposed it to the staff yesterday. You know, we have our building leadership team committee. We have our discipline team committee. The staff consensus at the end of the year, culture climate survey was we're all in favor of instructional leadership team. We just need the capacity to get that off the ground because it's, we want to do something, want to make sure that we're doing it well and not just throwing a bunch of people in a clear direction.
Thanks. I think, you know, we've, I would say for us, we've not done a core curriculum pilot yet. So the practice around board approval is new, something that we've discussed. And I think would potentially be good to look at in policy so that there's some clarity around it with the practices, I think.
Like I said, typically pilots are not a board approval. You do the pilots, the IMC committee. They present the recommendations to the IMC committee. The IMC committee makes the recommendations to the board for approval. This is unique because it's a larger cost and it's it's, I'm going to call it, it's more of a, it is a pilot, but you know, there's a higher risk because we're doing it like Director Merwin talked about. We're doing it school-wide. So it's it's a larger investment.
Thank you for your work and the proposal. I mean, these are the things that we're talking about as far as resources and where we're putting our money to make sure that our teachers have the resources that they need to do their work. And so this is a big part of that. Any other questions? Thank you so much. Thank you. Call for a motion.
I move that we approve the curriculum pilot of Amplify CKLA.
So that's what did you say at the end? Oh, thank you. Okay. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Amplify CKLA Curriculum Pilot for Coopville Elementary School. Any discussion?
I did have another just small follow-up question. The one-year pilot, it's going to come with any non-consumables, I assume. So do you have an idea at the top of your head what the renewal cost is going to look like if it'll be lower than that for a year going forward?
That's a great question. I'm not sure. Any other discussion? We'll take advisory votes from our student reps at this time. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. And we have one item that's been moved off of consent agenda to new business, and that's item H of non-rep contracts. And Director Connor, you, since you moved that off, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. The item for action was on the agenda, but we didn't have any contracts in our packet. So I'd prefer to do that after I've seen what they look like. Perhaps we could just roll that over to our next meeting or something.
Yep.
Move to table it. That works totally. Let me get that motion out right now.
Let's do it.
I'll move to table the contracts until our next meeting.
It's been moved and seconded to table the approval of the non-rep contracts.
It's been moved and seconded to table the approval of the non-rep contracts to the next meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Alright, and that's the end of new business. We are officially burned. Board members stay for signing of papers, and the rest of you have a wonderful evening.